No changes. Jeff shown section one pleasant valley township no changes. Empty fork section twenty seven niece township no changes. Enter site section one Lincoln township ottoman county. Change competition or optimal yields use manure analysis. And the final one is counter finishing site section seven glidden township no changes. You guys want to do committee reports while we wait for. Iowa negotiations and consulting.
During sir. Last week. I had a meeting with. S C H and bathing Wednesday morning. On the courthouse as far as. Progress which then led to um this Wednesday at nine thirty there is a punch list for the second floor. So they're hoping to have. Most of that complete um back to last week Friday Zach and I. Met a contractor over tricky building trying to define the scope of work. On the cement retaining wall. It was still trying to get two more bids, but there was one person there we spent by an hour trying to decide where. Where the improvements needed it where the retain all needs to start stop. So I think that's figured out for the next hopefully couple of years. This week. I have tomorrow we have at nine o'clock Courtney Stephanie and I are meeting with Iowa prison industries. To discuss the upcoming move. Tomorrow also. Gene and I have C C G P board meeting. And I said Wednesday is the punch list.
No, I can go um last week I had I J get through to me this year. This week. Meeting one Iowa. Present industries on Tuesday for the courthouse move. And then I just want to make everybody aware, I don't know if they were, but Dalton was elected to the education board chair for I C I T. And district one state I T rather so he's the chair so let's congratulate him if you see him he didn't mention it so. That's all I got.
So yeah, I'll go next time. So kind of being so wasn't elastic, I'm gonna kind of go back two weeks. Uh Monday, the eighteenth after we left our board meeting here, went tended to D Mac ribbon cutting in Templeton um very impressive. Uh I think that's gonna be a great asset for the region. Um then on Tuesday, we had C C G P and I'm sure that um. Scott's went over all that stuff with the last month week. And then on the twentieth, I had an H H S. Assessment meeting at new opportunities, we had two legislators are missing regard to. Uh the H S going to H H F S and the way they're talking about. Changes some of the regions and regionalizing and stuff. Uh there's some real concerns that that's. You know, I think one of the things they're gonna want somebody out here doing kind of like the fiscal agent. So there's gonna be they're gonna take a rate of cutoff or not gonna be any more money, so it'll be less money for services. Uh that's one of the biggest concerns. I think that's going on and. So um. There was some of the legislature didn't wasn't aware what was involved in that, but we did bring it up speed so. Uh then on. Friday, I had the S center board meeting. Uh they put the new server in. Uh they did receive their state reimbursement, which is a hundred sixty five thousand six hundred twelve dollars, which is probably over twice as much as what we got last night. And this is all due to the cold because those COVID, remember these funds come from O W I funds, so during COVID. They kind of had people back off, didn't have to pay for it for a while, so. So that's called catch them uh we averaged twelve point twelve for the month. Uh as of that Friday when I was up there, they were at fourteen. You know, always an interesting meeting after. So the conference table that day we was up to ninety eight thousand. Um okay, then on Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday was access Washington. Uh we did meet with the. Grassley. Uh Johnny Erks. And uh we met with the staff of Ruck's None. And at night Monday night we or Tuesday night we. Had dinner with uh Con- Congressman Peenstrom. I thought things went very well there um as like you can look through his book. Um again, quick fast trip. Um but I think we accomplished what we needed to. Then uh beans is out, I did not attend rolling hills at our policy council, then Wednesday I supposed to have rolling hills. I was gonna zoom in on that from the airport, well, they canceled, so I didn't have to worry about that. Uh Thursday I had new opportunities board meeting. One of the things we had our insurance company there. And as you guys are aware, insurance has gone up. Uh between all our insurance policies um. Property auto workers count, actually our workers comp went down out there. Thirteen thousand, but even with everything else, our policy is one of thirty five thousand four hundred eighty two dollars, which is a twenty eight percent increase.
Wow.
So, yeah.
Just so you know. Be prepared, so you guys heard that number, be prepared for what we're gonna see in this term of our budget system.
Well, and that was, you know, that was brought up at ISAC. At ISAC, they brought that same thing up, so. Um actually. Like how new opportunities, we're having hard someone to do the under the underwriting policy. These one can't get anybody to do it anymore. Uh okay, we reviewed the insurance, uh we updated our financials, approved the financials. We uh did the fiscal year twenty four agency budget. Uh so we're using on our um. For administration costs, we're figuring out fifteen point seven percent. Uh we're told looking at income of sixteen million seven hundred fifty seven thousand. Uh and expenses seventeen million fifteen thousand. Um we did approve a box. Of C S B G, a budget amendment of forty nine hundred seventeen dollars and then um. Head start based on the head start report, uh we did a budget revision there um. They have some carryover beings of the. COVID times and stuff like that and um. So with that and with a grand of a hundred thousand dollars from um on Wick. We are planning on building the garage out there for those two funds. Uh we have a lot of these people on the special Wick program have to come to get out them cars run for so long. And this will, we could probably leave some of that medicine there overnight and stuff and not have to worry about. Re-eating them up. So it's got to be a long meeting uh but anyway. And then on Friday, I did the I JAG up at Carol High and. Very interesting program. Did two classes. And this week I have. But busy, this week only got C C G P.
I can well, I also went to I JAG last week and. Just sat through three classes. It did seem like a good, it did seem like a good program um and then we also did have our first safety committee meeting. On Tuesday and that we had several people show up, so that was good and then we also. I got a training matrix from them, so that was nice, so it's got all of the different departments and all the training that. They should have, so made it very nice to manage. And um this week I don't have anything.
I don't have it in this week, I just thought we were coming out. Okay, let's do the nine AM but. Um and last week I actually we did go look at a. Road that needs fixed in mid river and the guys are doing it.
You see, is there. Guy or lady standing up there?
I do not.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and just recess for.
You both want to come up or just one?
Good morning, I'll go ahead and introduce myself, I'm Stephanie Houseman, Carroll County Supervisor.
Jane Miners, Carroll County Supervisor.
Cindy's getting about Carroll County Supervisor.
Courtney Fire County Editor.
Uh Mike Anderson, Carroll County Supervisor.
Scott Johnson Supervisor.
I'm Jack Reed, this is Chelsea Stole.
Iowa negotiating.
So we first spoke when we were down at ISAC, um we referenced or we looked at your guys' references as well. So the board and I passed along some of the information that you guys gave me, so kind of open it up with what you guys do. How long you been in business and then if anybody has questions they could ask, good questions, wonderful.
Sure, I brought a pass out for you, may have some of this information, but. Be helpful for you to follow along. Okay, so if it's okay with the board, I thought what I might do is is that uh. Uh let me start off and talk about the services that we provide to the counties. And how that works and then from there I'm gonna switch over and talk about our company and how we operate, okay? So um. If you turn to the page that has the list of services on it, I'll start there um. First off is is that uh wanna thank you for giving us some time on your agenda this morning um. Two things before I start on this part here about the services, one is is that. We're a full service H R company, so what do I mean by that? We're not just a resource, a resource company, somebody who you 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 call them when you need them, you call them when you have a problem. We're not that. Um we're a full service company, we're working for our county clients all the time, whether it's, you know, doing research. Or updating things and we make periodical visits to our county clients at the same time. And so that's the difference, um the other thing is is that. What we do when we take on a new county client is first thing we do is is do an H R audit, what's that? Was that we're gonna look at documents and procedures that you have that are in place right now and compare those to. Where we would like a county to be and also to see whether or not. That those are consistent with the recent law changes and updates and circle. That's the first thing we do, by the way, you can ask questions anytime, I I don't mind, alright, so um. If you look at your sheet here, I'm not gonna talk about every single one of these, but. Uh again, feel free to ask questions at any times, I look at the first one here, employee handbooks is that. Boy handbook's most important document any county has because. It provides information, advice, guidance and direction for everybody about policies and procedures for the county. Um. The handbooks that we do, we update those and rewrite them every three years, why? Because there's law changes and procedural changes and legal changes that need to take place. That we rewrite them and update and that's what we do, we we will amend the handbook as time goes by if the county needs us to amend it. But other than that is is that uh we do the rewrite and update every third year. The next one I want to go down to in here is job descriptions. Job descriptions are more important than than some people think because one is Iowa changed the law in twenty seventeen in. In respect to work comp. And so you need to make sure that your job descriptions correlate with the new law that they passed in twenty seventeen. You look at employment applications down here, this is, this is one of the areas that we find. Uh. A few times with counties is is that there there are legal issues and legal questions that need to be on your application for employment. Okay, the the Iowa law uh prevents an employer from doing certain things. If that the applicant doesn't check the boxes on the job application, okay? Uh. Move on down here to uh discipline and discharge um. In our world, there there's, there's three areas that cause counties the most problems, okay? Um and puts you at the most risk, this is one of them, okay? Um. Discipline and discharge is not as simple as a lot of employers think, even though that Iowa isn't is an at-will state. Uh there are, and again Iowa passed. Uh some provisions in twenty seventeen in respect to. Um discipline and discharge and resignation and termination. Where you're required to do certain things, you're required to do that in writing pursuant to law. Um the other thing is that there are certain positions in a county that. Uh if that you run into discipline or you're gonna have an interview with them. Or an investigation or you're gonna terminate them, you're required, they're required, they're entitled to an appeal process. So you need to know which employees are entitled to an appeal process. Uh. Go down here to work comp and as I said, this is one of the three items that. Is a big risk for lawsuits and litigation um. I'll tell you what our company does um. We monitor, you want I M W C A? Uh we monitor work comp cases, especially if they go long term like. Two weeks or two weeks or more or longer and we monitor those for our counties, so how do we do that, first of all is is that. We asked to be on the communication through company nurse, is company nurse? Um so we're on that communications of information coming back from company nurse about the boy's injury, alright? So two things to know about that, one is in Iowa. The information that's tied to directly to the work comp injury is not HIPAA protected in Iowa. However, there are sometimes information on a company nurse report. That is HIPAA protected and that's what we do, we look to see whether or not there's. An additional information on that work comp report that's HIPAA protected, so we can let the county know. So nobody's telling somebody else that John Doe or Jane Doe has something to do with her um. So that's what we do, the other part is if it goes work comp claims go long term um. We will, we will monitor that on behalf of the county to represent your interest now. I I hear all the time is is that well, we have an insurance company, I M W C A and they'll take care of it. It's not a good position to take, I'll just tell you that because. When a. Injury, work comp injury goes to a certain point. And then that employee may be seeking a partial disability claim or disability claim. I M W C A forms that out to an outside attorney to handle. And that outside attorney will handle that on behalf of I M W C A. The county needs somebody to be looking after their interest in this in those cases as well, because there are times when that. You know, the the injury may such be that where the employee may not be able to come back and work. And so then, you know, you may want to offer that employee a voluntary severance agreement, okay? That's, that's what we do, we do all those things, we monitor the cases, we get to a point where that. You may want to offer that severance agreement, we'll produce a severance agreement, we'll ask you, you know. How you want us to go about that, so I'm just giving you, giving you an example of things that happen. That we do as a part of our risk management, okay, the risk management is about protecting the county, that's what it's about. And we do that because we have systems that we put in place, one of them I just described to you about work comp. And the other is about discipline and discharge and the other is about F M L A and how you handle that. Uh those are the three biggest items that uh. Are puts county at the biggest risk, but I'm just telling you how that we handle those things, we go beyond this. We don't sit in the office, but for you to call us. Um. Any questions so far?
How many attorneys do you have, how many full-time staff attorneys do you have?
There, there's the two of us and I have an office person.
They're all attorneys?
Yeah, no, no, no.
How many attorneys do you have?
We have, we have one attorney, that's our company attorney, is the attorney who provides the legal advice when we need it or when our county needs it. We have an attorney we use for the company. And she, yeah, so she and she's spent thirty five years in playing the law area, so. Um she's well versed in all of this stuff, as an example is is that, but let's say that we're, we're dealing with a. A matter that's kind of hippie, so to speak, and that, you know, we decide there's some legal input that needs to be done with that is. We'll go to the attorney and we'll ask her to provide some input or guidance on this situation so that. You know, and that's at no cost, everything that we have in our service fee, all inclusive, there's no additional cost whatsoever.
Like a great example of that is navigating marijuana in the workplace, you know, it's a, it's a really, you know, hot button issue that without any. You know, there's not much case law around it, so it's, you know, for us to, you know, to to speak to that, we like to have her, her opinion as well, so those are. Places where we reached out to use her for.
We've, we've asked, we've asked ISAC or a spot next year in March to talk about. Employees that are putting in an application, have a medical marijuana card and how you deal with those. Because I tell you, that's, that's kind of the real, real gray area right now, uh and then. And we have, we've had clients who have called us and said, hey, I got this person in an application, they have this. Medical marijuana card and they have to drive, so what do we do, you say, I mean, right now.
From an insurance. Policy perspective, you can't have them driving company equipment, you can't have them driving road careers, it's not gonna work.
Right, and 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 you may know, but right now the the law that's applying to. Medical marijuana is a big gray area, the big gray area right now. So we thought that it might be a really good idea to provide information and our attorney would be with us and provide that information and. At ISAC next year, they haven't given us an answer yet, but it's about I'd let you know that um. One of the other things about this sheet is that. We're a seven day a week. Company, okay, uh you can call us on weekends, you call Saturday and Sunday, I have. I have supervisors that. One of them, my wife's called me on Saturday a lot, so they said coffee in the morning, but that's okay, I just said. Let you know we're a seven day a week, you know, you have, you have a twenty four hour service that needs something. And it's on a weekends, on a Saturday or Sunday, we're available, okay, maybe not quite twenty four hours a day, but you know, we're.
If we needed you on site, how quick could you be here?
Pardon me?
If we needed you on site, how quick could you be here?
It just, it just depends, I mean, if that. If it was emergency. Most of the time we could probably be here same day, if not the next day.
So twenty four hours is a, is a great, but if it's, I mean, if you meet us same day, I can. I can be available.
We, we pride ourselves on being available.
Yeah, and proactive, that's the, that's the thing that we found to be the most important, which is, you know, we, we, we can answer as many calls as we want, but we found that. You know, by going through the and, you know, providing guidance on all of these things and a proactive perspective really makes.
Your jobs easier and certainly makes our jobs easier as well, so um you know, coming in and doing that initial H R audit is gonna be really important. I know you talked about your need for job descriptions uh when we talked at ISAC, so that, you know, those are all of the things that, you know, we're, we're here to. We're here to work with you on and engage you to where you want to be and where we believe you need to be. Um and then, you know, and then we operate from a maintenance perspective going forward, but still, you know, coming and, you know, being, being certainly. Being active.
So at first it'll be kind of a lot and then once we get, so my other question too is, do you guys, with having a, an attorney on staff, do you guys help? Create a policy that we might have to implement, um the verbiage, the correct verbiage. Cause I know it's been very important to the board, we've discussed it, we haven't done anything with it, but creating a policy for time sheets. We've been made aware that every single employee elected, non-elected, everybody should be filling out a time sheet. For hours worked for to receive.
Yeah. Let me give you another, a couple of other examples about about the legal part of it, you know, and and the legal council that we have is is that. We have, we have a, a specific model handbook that we view and we use it, we've used it for the last twelve years. All of our county clients have it, all of the legal areas in there was written by the attorney, okay? All, all of those are authored by the attorney in there, if there are any other legal areas, whether it's in the application for employment. Or it's something else is the attorney has authored all those, she's put all those together. She also updates those as time goes by for us, then we give to you, okay? Um I mean, that's, that's just a part of the, part of the service that we have um.
And I M C S has been around since two thousand eleven, so for, so for quite a while, so Jack has a lot of experience in this space, I've been, you know. Coaching in H R for fifteen years, so you know, we're, we're really a pretty well-rounded partnership that we make.
I think so.
Yeah.
Uh but I just wanted to give you a feel for, for how the, how the legal part comes into all this stuff, how it plays into your benefit. Uh as, as well as our to have an, have an attorney on call for us um. Other questions about services?
How many other counties do you serve?
Um we have uh. We have, in this, in this area, we have Crawford next door and we have Menona and we have Play and we have Old Seal County. We, we do the city of Denison over here um. So i- if you would turn to the next page, which is the references and I, I know I sent these out before, at least some of them um. I added uh Lucas County down here in the bottom, here's for the reason is that Lucas County is a new county client. Uh they've been with us less than a year, so if you want to talk to somebody who's a new client. Who that, we've been providing services for about six months now. Feel free to call any or all of those people, as a matter of fact, is is that. Here's how things are, I can sit here and tell you how good a job we can do for Carroll County, I know how good a job we can do for Carroll County. I say the proof's in the pudding, all these people and ask them how satisfied they are with us, okay? I, I just encourage you to, some of them, all of them, you see, I give you county attorneys who we work very close with, we work very close with uh. Owen Johnson next door here at Crawford County a lot um. So I kind of picked out a variety of people, I'm gonna give you all page, I would pick out a variety of people. That you can check with and just ask them how satisfied they are. Uh I guess I just think that's important that you hear that from somebody else um.
So the other, one last question and then I'll let it open up to the board, but negotiations, it does show that you guys do union negotiations. So we currently only have one union left in Carroll County um.
Been negotiating union contracts for forty years. Been negotiating union contracts for forty years.
Is that an additional fee?
None, none of those things on that list are additional fees.
Do you offer other things that would be an additional fee, or is this just like your standard package, this is what you're good at, this is what you're sticking with?
If you notice, I don't know if you saw that, but there's a part on, on our service agreement that says if you ask for something that's outside of that big list there. Then, you know, there might be an additional fee, you know how many times that's happened in the last ten years, about once, okay? One, one time they asked for something that was a hybrid, that was completely off, off the scale sort of a thing, and then we, I just said, well. That's not included in our list, they said, okay, that's okay, but I'm just telling, that doesn't rarely happen, I mean, then. Our list is pretty broad, our service areas are pretty broad, there's almost nothing that's not, was not included in the cost.
That's where that, oh, I'm sorry, go for it.
No, I do like, your travel expenses are included in that fee, it's not additional.
Yep, everything's included in that fee, that's the beauty of that, you know, doing all of that extra work upfront to put you guys in a good spot. You know, that allows, you know, that allows us to sleep good at night and allows you to do that as well, but, you know, that's kind of how, how we're able to juggle that. Is we do a lot of work on the front end.
So with no violating expenses, so if you were doing union negotiations. There would be no trip charge to come, would it be in person or would it be via Zoom?
Oh, we do negotiations in person, there, there's never any cost for travel or mileage, no matter what we're doing.
Thank you.
And I do want to disclose to the board, I don't know if we read it, but it is, they prefer a three-year contract. And you do have one year, you can cancel if you're not happy with the moment.
Right. Our, our, our service agreements run on three-year periods, okay? And, and the first one, and all of renewal contracts all work the same way, at the end of the first year. There's an opt-out, you're not happy, not satisfied with the services, you can opt out and cancel the agreement. Typically, the counties like to have their service agreements run on, on a fiscal year, so it winds up at your budget, and we can do that. That's not a problem, uh, but this, again, let you know is, yeah, um. The end of the first year, you're not happy, you can cancel the whole agreement. I'm proud to tell you that we've never ever had a county do that, once they start doing business with us. Don't mean to brag, I'm just telling you the facts, is that we've never had anybody opt out.
That's good though, cause I was going to ask, you know, you, you mentioned a lot of your strengths, what would be one weakness? Love that question.
What would be one weakness, let's see, how, how long do I get to think about this?
Well, I think, I think one of the weaknesses is, is, is we're kind of in a, in a transition period, so. Um, you know, Jack and I have been working for a couple of years together, we are now, um, in a, in a partnership, and so it will transition to me at some point. So right now, we're still, you know, he, he has more of the public sector knowledge than I do. Um, I've worked in the private sector, I've done union negotiations in the private sector, um, but not in the public sector, so that may be, you know, that may be one of the things. That, that can, can look like a challenge from your perspective.
But, but the, but the upside of that is, is that now you get two for one, when it used to only be me and my office people, and now you're. Who have the price of one, so it's, but uh, one other thing about the services, and I, I don't, I didn't mention this when we went through it, but. Our services cover all the departments for the county, even the ones that stand, have standalone board. Conservation, public health, assessor, emergency management, we cover everybody. We don't leave anybody out, okay, even though they're, they're under a different board, as you know, our services are available to everybody. I'm just going to talk a little bit about the company now. Again, feel free to ask questions, is I can just tell you that one of the things that's, that's, since I started this company. Always been about quality and not quantity, I can tell you that. I don't give a proposal to every county who asks me for an RFP, alright? And the other part was, before Chelsea come on board, is I wanted to always make sure, and we're still doing it now, is that. When we tell you we're able to do something, we want to be there to do it for it, we don't want to have so many clients, never wanted to have so many clients. That we can't be available, because as you said, you know, if you want us, you want us, right, and so. That's why that, and we still are, all about quality and not quantity. So if you say, well, why did we come to Carroll County, it's because, one is, is that. Um, logistically, it, it makes sense for us, uh, because that we can save you costs because we share costs. With the other people that are around here, see, it is, is one thing, uh, but, you know. I just want to let you know is that mo- all, all of the company's clients are either on the southern tier of Iowa. Or they're up here in the western northwest part of Ohio, so. Uh, that's why logistic-wise, that makes sense for us, but. Just proud I let you know that, that's where, that's where we're at. The, another thing that we do that, there, there's a lot of things we do that our county clients don't necessarily see or aware of. One of those is that we have a system and have a person to monitor all state and federal laws that affect counties. And when we, we know about that, we let our counties know about that, we know how to, let them know how to deal with that. Or whether they need to make some adjustment or, or something else. That's, that's one of the things that we're doing when you don't see us, you just want them. The other thing is, is that. And then Chelsea mentioned it about the availability part is, is that. I would say, I would guess that ninety-five percent of the time, you call, you get us. You don't call, we return the call same day. Would be highly unusual that we wouldn't return a call or an email same day, if it's not possible, for some reason, we let you know that, okay? We'll say, if you, if you tell us it's urgent, we're going to be back to you ASAP. But if you just call and you're wanting information or something, then we don't answer the phone, we're going to be back to you same day. Well, that's, that's one of the things that we pride ourselves on.
We understand how scary an issue can be, and so, you know, our availability is very important to you guys.
Think I've kind of outlined it fairly well, haven't, haven't I? Uh, I hope so anyhow, but I'm glad, we're glad to answer any questions in my day.
How long has, has you been in this company?
How long has it been in my company?
And what did, did you work for yourself before, that on a different company, or?
Yeah, I, um.
Or is there other companies that you're?
For, for a lot of years, I, I was a service rep uh for a national union. And I, I covered Iowa, Kansas, Nebraska, Missouri with HR things, so.
So there's been different names that you've operated on, or?
Pardon me?
Have you operated on different names of companies?
Uh, no, I didn't have the company when I was a service rep, that wasn't my company. I was, I was just, I was employed by somebody else. I, I started this company in twenty-eleven specifically to provide full-time HR services to counties.
So curious, plain devil's asking here, so, we're in year two, you do something I don't like. Can the board say we're done, effective immediately?
Sure, here, here's what we do. Our role is not to tell department heads or supervisors what they have to do. Our role is to give information, advice, guidance, and assistance, that's what we do. So if you would say to us, we want something, or you like something, that's fine. Uh, again, we go to what our role is, our role is, is, you know, to be there for you. To give guidance, information, advice to you or any department head, or any, any supervisor. That's what we do. So, I mean, we, we don't give directives, it's, it's not our role, our role is providing services.
So on number fourteen, this is onsite service, updates and training. What would be an example of a training that you could come onsite to get?
We, we, we have requests, uh, a lot of times from a department head about training. Um, to give you one example is, is that. We've had ongoing requests for years from public health, you have public health department, from public health about HIPAA and so forth. So what we do is, we create powerpoints, have a PowerPoint for that, that we would provide to them, we'll bring it in, we'll. We'll present the PowerPoint, however they want us to do that. But that's just an example of a training area that we do.
Well, you may sit in a department head meeting and decide, you know, and talk off the cuff about FMLA and realize you guys are. Little uncomfortable with how you're feeling, then you just call us and we come in and, and we, you know, come to the department head meeting or. Whatever, you know, avenue you'd like us to take, and we, you know, we can provide that, provide that training or education.
We usually spend a lot of time with the county engineers, because we have the most employees, okay? Usually do that, and uh, and, and another example of it is, it's in the training aspect is, is that. In twenty-twenty, the Federal Motor Carriers and Safety Association created a new drug and alcohol testing. Policy for CDL employees, so. Hopefully, your secondary roads department has that up-to-date policy. If they don't, that's one of the things in that HR audit that we're talking about, that we would see, that we would ask for that. And then we would see that, and again, our legal counsel wrote the policy, it's been updated twice. We also, uh, the people uh that are. That have CDL employees, um, and they have this drug and alcohol policy that's. Correlates with the Federal Motor Carriers Association. They, they have to establish, they have to list one or two uh designated employer reps on that, on that policy, okay? And with a phone number for them to be contacted, that's required to do. They're also required under Iowa and federal law to take training for that position, we provide that. We provide that, we, we've done that for the last several years, uh. Uh, via Zoom, and um, our, our, our attorney does that.
Where are you, where are you located out of?
I live in a town, she lives close to Cedar Rapids.
Where's your office?
I, I have an office, office that's in, in my house.
So as far as new employees, like onboarding and orientation? Is that anything you guys do, or is that?
Yes, sir, um, well, well, again, is we do it by request, I mean, if you, if you have a department that's getting ready to hire some people, and they. Uh, first of all, we need to make sure that the application for employment's up to date, so we know that we're not doing something wrong, okay? Uh, but two is, is that if they have people they're going to interview and they want information about doing the interview. If they want questions that they can ask during an interview, that they want the list of illegal questions they can ask, we do that all the time. Uh, we provide them, I, I just had the other day, the city of uh Denison over here is hiring a new parking wreck person. Ask for a list of questions that they should ask, or speaking, we provided that to them, uh, along with a list of illegal questions. Um, so that they have that, I, I have been involved in some. Interviews with applications, we're available to do that, but we, again, we do it on, on request.
Yeah, so it's kind of catered to what, you know, some of our counties require a lot, some of our counties require a little, it's kind of all dependent on. You know, what we kind of decide to do together as a group, but what, what you need, you know, we, we're here.
Yeah, can you tell me anything about a John Johnson, have you had any workings with him or work with him or any?
John Johnson? No, John Johnson.
I was doing some research, it just popped up, that's why I was.
No, don't know a John Johnson. One of the other things is, we mentioned that it's the um three-year service agreement, and uh. Usually like, you don't have, as far as we're concerned, you don't have to run on fiscal year, the county's just like, run off fiscal year, I mean. We, we can, we're, we're past the first July, but we can, we can make that work, if that, if you want to give us a try. Uh, we, we can set that contract up, so it'll run just a little bit longer, but then it'll run on the fiscal year, and. Then, then you get a little longer introduction period to look at us too, in that respect, okay? So, but we could do that, I mean, as an example, here, here's what we could do, if you want to give us a try. If you wanted to start a service agreement, say the, excuse me, the first November. Then for November and December, we'll comp those two months, because we bill on quarter. We would bill the first of January, then we would set that service agreement, so it would expire uh on June, June the third, it's a year after. For the end of the first year, so then if you don't cancel out the agreement, it rolls over into two years. But every, every time we renew a service agreement, I know I said this, and I'll reiterate. Every time we, we renew a three-year contract, still at the end of the first year, there's an opt-out provision. The opt-out provision never leaves, never leaves our service agreement, okay?
I don't have any more questions, is anybody else? I know we're not going to be making a decision today, because we do have a proposal from, by two more companies. So I do want to take the time and say thank you for coming, um, we appreciate it. And if we have any other questions, come out before we make a decision, we will, I'll either reach out to you via email, or we'll let you kind of know which direction we'll went.
Great, alright, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet.
Nice to see you again. Drive safe. Alright, I have other questions for Jim. Oh, yeah, what do we got? The other HR presentation and Bill Day.
In our last meeting, thank you.
And then potentially the sheriff is going to give a quarterly report. So I think that's it. There's a motion in a second, any more discussion, if not, all those are going to be signed, I was saying, uh.